Five o'clock, yes.
Everybody please rise. Councilman Evans is going to lead us in an invitation and Chief Jones with his pledge of allegiance for us.
Let us pray. God thank you for today, for allowing us to be here together to, to, to conduct this city's business. Be with us, help us to use sound judgment, sound heart and sound mind, so we can provide in that way, sir. Jesus rest him.
In the name of the Lord. Will please join me in the time of pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Council is now open. Thank you everybody for being here. I like to see all these smile faces. And thank you everybody for being with us online. First out here is public comments. We have nothing listed under public, public comments tonight. So we pass on to the adoption amendments. Uh, amendments for June sixth, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting, and June the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, council work session. I entertain a motion to adopt both of them as written, while we separate.
So moved.
Second. Alright, have a motion and second. No further discussion? Here none? All the question, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
All the poll same sign?
Mayor Phil, permit me, uh, move on it, like a, to add an agenda item to, uh, approve ordinance, mayor council amend, uh, section two dash three seven three, the fee schedule fees established by resolution. Uh, this has to do with the changes we made to our credit card system. And we didn't actually make the ordinance change yet, so we need to adopt that ordinance change order and move ahead with that.
Okay, we'll make that.
It's just not on the agenda, so we need to have enough.
Add to the agenda, okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all the polls same sign?
Okay, and we can leave it, that says number seven if you like, mayor, just put it there.
Alright, no old business tonight, on the new business. First item we have here is approval, purchase command vehicle equipment, fire department funding sources plus, Councilman Evans and Chief Jones please.
Chief, thank you, um, for coming up and explaining to us exactly what's happening.
I will, yes sir. Good evening, mayor council, what tonight is, we're requesting approval to go ahead and, uh, purchase this command vehicle. Uh, the command vehicle was originally approved in the twenty twenty-three fiscal year splot. However, it did not come in, uh, before the end of June, it came in last week. So what we're asking for tonight, it was, is approved in the budget in the twenty twenty-three fiscal year splot, uh, budget, to be paid for out of splot funds. And what we're asking tonight is approval to, if you still use those funds, they haven't been used out of the splot for the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
And since they, um, weren't used last year, they as well go into the stupid budget year.
That's correct.
And so Mr. Mayor, I move that we go ahead and approve the purchase of the command vehicle for the fire department.
Second. Second, any discussion? The user, all the question, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the poll same sign? Thank you chief, what we do with the other vehicle?
Uh, the, the old black Ford pickup will get, uh, demoted to the firefighters and the red pickup will go on gov deals if it's, it's on the flat lay.
Okay.
Just curious.
Thanks, that's what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah, that's great. Alright, out of number four then is a approval, motorized service agreement, police department, Councilman Albejo and Chief Dunn. Go ahead chief.
Good evening council, uh, this is an agreement that, um, since I've been here with, it's a recurring agreement that we have with motorized, that, uh, servicing the corporate radios and the in-car radios that, uh, police department use. There's twenty-six, uh, in-car and thirteen portals that we have the service contract on that we decide every year, uh, by this time. This year is thirty-two hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Hey, uh, your motion?
So mayor, make a motion that we approve the motorized service agreement.
Second. And most the second, I assume this means a even side, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the chief's side.
For the chief's side.
Alright. Okay, I have most and a second, further the conversation?
I do have a question chief, um, so, so this is something that we decide every year for the, the, the radios that we're, we're using?
Yes, sir.
So, um, is there a replacement scheduled for the radios or are they part of this contract to be replaced over time? The reason I ask that is if, you know, if the radios is supposed to add three or four, last three or four years, is there a way we can do a, uh, more than one year, do a multi-year?
This is just like a warranted replacement, uh, for the radios. If we have any problem, we go, uh, make it communications, and they take care of us. As we are yet at the paper radio or.
Right, this is supportive.
Oh, okay, okay.
Services.
Alright, any further comments? Here none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the polls same sign? Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for that chief. Okay, out of number five is discussion of the twenty twenty-three mils rate, Councilman Wright and Chief of County Harrison please.
I believe, uh, Ms. Harrison has some information to present to us tonight.
Thank you, mayor council, um, in your folders tonight, there is three documents, there's the PT thirty-two-one, there is, um, some numbers, a summary of some items there, and then there's my email. Let's, let's talk about the PT thirty-two-one first, which is the computation of the military rate rollback. And as you see on the left side of the document, there's the twenty twenty-two digest and the left, the right side is the twenty twenty-three digest. And right in the middle, you'll see re-assa- reassessment of the existing real property, which is twenty-seven million, seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, the rest of the items in the digest, the personal property vehicles, mobile homes, uh, equipment is, is fairly consistent with the prior year. Those might have changed just a little bit. Um, our exemptions have increased from forty million, four sixty, four thousand to forty-eight million, a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, part of that is the senior exemption, but we've also had an increase in our VA exemptions that just are, you know, come from the county. Um, so our net digest, uh, went from two hundred and twenty-seven million to two hundred and fifty-five million, uh, an increase again of one seven million, seven sixty-seven, two forty-two. Current military rate right now is the ten point three six four and our rollback rate is the nine point two three seven. Again, the rollback rate is the rate that would, uh, produce the equivalent amount of taxes based on the reassessment of the property values, uh, that the county has done for us. On the second page, um, I've just kind of done a little bit of, uh, a few scenarios there, um, again, I used, uh, a home with a fair market value of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, at the rollback rate, the tax on that home would be three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. At the current military rate, it would be four hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And then also if potential rate of eleven point zero, the property taxes would be four hundred and forty dollars on a one hundred thousand dollar home. Um, there are two lines there, one is G D O R, that's Georgia Department of Revenue for the homeowner tax relief grant and then homeowner. Um, and I just kind of broke it down, so under the current rate, if the homeowner has the home state exemption, they would actually pay to the city the two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and then the Georgia Department of Revenue would pay to the city a hundred and eighty-six dollars. So I just kind of wanted to show that to you and I did the same for the rollback rate and then the potential military rate of eleven point oh. Down below that where I've got twenty twenty-three taxes levy, um, I do have like three columns. First column is the rollback rate, second column is current rate, third column is the eleven point oh. Um, at the rollback rate, the property taxes levy, uh, would be two point three million, at the current rate, two point six million, and that, at the rate of eleven would be two point eight million. As we crunch those numbers for the property taxes levy, those are numbers before any type of error and release. So for example, the twenty twenty-two taxes levy was two point three million, three, uh, two point, two million, three hundred thirty-nine, one fifty-four, but our error and release is for almost forty thousand, so really our adjusted digest was, uh, two million, two ninety-nine. I just wanted to kind of provide, you know, that information for you. As we talk about the taxes, um, and anything current rate or above would be considered a tax increase, so we would just need to do two, three public hearings and we'd have to advertise one week prior to each public hearing. So that's just kind of our timeline, you know?
When do we have to have this final?
You know, ideally to adopt the military rate at the first meeting in September, that would be ideal, just because after it's adopted, we have to, uh, send the paperwork to Department of Revenue, we've got to get our, our conversion files and check to make sure that they all reconciled to the digest. And then once that's done, we've got to, um, download it into our software, check the bills. Um, so that, that takes a good two to three weeks and with the grant, the new grant this year, there might be a little extra stuff we need to do. So if we can adopt, adopt by September fifth, hopefully we can start collecting by October first.
Well, mayor, this is listed under my name, but, uh, since I was the, the only, the only name vote on the budget, I'll defer to you gentlemen to discuss what you, what you'd like to do here. This item is listed as discussion, so I don't believe there needs to be a motion for us to have open discussion.
Right.
You can have a discussion since the discussion item, if someone decides to make a motion after discussion, that would be a fair zone.
So, um, in, in my view, with the budget that we passed, um, we do not need to be adopting the rollback rate. Um, I think that would be a short. We need to be considering at least, uh, keeping the current military, uh, the same rate as last year. Um, we, and we realize that this results in a sub, uh, tax increase. However, uh, our, you know, everybody's feeling that at this point and our, our budget is, uh, grown to the point where, you know, we need that little bit extra to, uh, to, you know, keep it, keep the services the way that the citizens accept. So as far as I'm concerned, we could at least, um, vote to whether we would like to advertise, um, a tax increase of some sort. Uh, I don't know, do we need to specify that?
We need to specify.
Before we advertise, we would need to specify.
Yeah, well, do we have to, do we have to specify what the military rate will?
What the proposed military rate is, yes.
Now, now, we haven't adopted that number, so it could still change.
Right, that's the, you're, you're, you're advertising the proposed military rate for the purpose of public hearings.
And I, I would be happy to make motion if, um, you know, at the end of our discussion, there, uh, to that, to that extent.
I, I would, I would agree, um, at this point, uh, I, I think we should probably leave the military rate as it is. To, to, to truly see, I think, uh, what the effect of, o- year over year, on, on reducing the military rate to over the last year. Going forward, uh, we already know that we're going to have growth. Uh, and, and I think in this next year, things are going to start happening. And, uh, so we're going to have to, uh, increase some of the, not increase the services, but defuck the services that we have, um, to provide to the citizens, uh, what they expect. In, in the new areas where houses will be coming up, we're going to need more police coverage and, and, uh, fire coverage and, and, actually, we're going to have more public works also, so, um, I, I think we ought to at, at least, leave the military as it is.
So, uh, my opinion, I know that, uh, we've had discussed it for some time. Uh, I know that the, um, the budget committee has looked at it a lot of different ways and no matter how we looked at it and the decisions that we came across, I think we, uh, made a responsible decision to, uh, to review in terms of what we need to do this coming fiscal year in order for us to continue to grow as a city. And, uh, so I am also in favor of keeping the current military instead of the rollback rate. I'm not in favor of the potential military of eleven. Also, uh, with that said, if no one else has anything to say, uh, I would be willing to make a motion that we, uh, that we set the current military of ten point three six four. Go forward.
Second.
Okay, anybody else? Any comments?
I think this is a great way to raise taxes and blame it on the county. That's all I have to say about it, fair.
Anyway, okay.
I don't feel like anybody's, um, uh, shirking responsibility and we, we acknowledge that it is our budget and it's, uh, our taxes that are, that we're, um, voting to, uh, keep at the same rate for. I think that's, uh, pretty, uh, responsible way to go as far as the city moves.
I appreciate what you're saying, the council, for what, but the point I was making was that without the reassessment that the county did, we would have likely have been compelled to increase taxes without this business with the rollback and all that, it would, it would probably would have happened, uh, regardless. But, uh, I think that's, it's, this is fine, we're, we're over that now, so that's all for you, mayor, thank you.
Okay. The, uh, straighten that out just a little bit, the county does not direct the taxes, the county is directed to do it by state, uh, the assessment is all the time. So it's not the county's fault that the assessment went up. It just, it went up. Now, also keep in mind that all our costs are going up. And last year we had a significant cut in the, uh, building rate, but it didn't account for any of the cost of everything. Gas, uh, upkeep on the homes and that thing, there's a lot, um, businesses around here. You know, there've been a lot of things like that. We have equipment wearing out, we may will get some of it back through the splot, like, because I'm going to talk about that in one, a few minutes. We also have a, a nice increase in the exemptions, which decreases the amount of taxes we're collecting, but yet we have an increase in customers out there. And all these customers, whether they pay taxes or not, you know, deserve all the services we give them. They want the fire department there if there's a fire or a problem, or a federal problem. They want the police there if they have a problem. How do you pay for these things? You know, we have a, I think we do very well on, on what we do with the money we have. So, uh, I don't, I don't blame anybody for it, it's just the way it is. Everybody knows, I mean, uh, my house have all the costs go up every year. And I hope that I have a little bit of increase in something to help take care of. But whatever, okay, at this point, I'm, there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the poll same sign?
Aye.
Okay, go to one. And it's still, uh, that's going to be what we put on.
Excuse me, yes, there'll be public hearings.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next out here is a form of council appointments, I've discussed this with all the council members and, uh, I'll read out what they are right here, if you're ready. I entertain a motion, Ward and Sewer, Councilman Evans, primary, Councilman Wright, secondary, Fire Department, Councilman Albejo, and Councilman Byrd, the secondary, Police Department, Council, Councilman Wright, primary, Councilman Evans, uh, secondary, Administration, Councilman Byrd, uh, primary, Councilman Albejo, secondary, Economic Development, Councilman Byrd, and, uh, his primary, and Councilman Evans, secondary. I entertain a motion. Everybody agrees?
So moved.
Second. Move to the second, any further discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the polls same sign? Okay, it's all passed, thank you very much, sir. Alright, now we into out of number seven, the orders.
Uh, yeah, mayor, you have in your packet here, uh, a copy of the documents that we, so, very last, should be very last in the, in the packet here today. Uh, but I'm not, I'm not going to read it, uh, completely, there's some, uh, language in the marking written that reflects the changes. Uh, I believe we all received it in the email this week as well, so, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve these changes as they are written and then, uh, we can have a new discussion if we need to. So I believe the document is written.
Alright. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
These are just, it's really just to get our ordinance as a compliance with the decision that we already made, it's just to sort of perform a, uh, update to our, uh, ordinance system.
Mayor, Carol and I have discussed this before, I drafted ordinance amend that and we drafted the language such that we don't have to amend it if this, if the amount changes from time to time or the fee structure changes from time to time. We can have a different agreement with a different vendor that might change things and this has, we reserve the right to charge the fee and there will be a notice posted where we accept these payments as to the fee and what, what the details of that are. So that's why it is worded the way it is. So we've added the word ordinance in the section title and then the sentence at the end, that we reserve the right to charge the fee.
Okay, you agree with the council? All the votes, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the polls same sign? Thank you very much, and we all need to sign this, council. Okay, now, we down to the comments from the council. Which gentleman wants to start, and I'll have to start with that. Councilman Byrd, please.
Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody who came out and everybody who, uh, helped to, uh, put on the, uh, Intendant's Day celebration that we had, uh, a week or so ago, um, a little week ago. Um, it was amazing time, the crowds were incredible, the food was great, the Intendant was good, the, uh, the fireworks were very good, um, and it was just a great, um, fun time. Uh, I don't know anybody who was there who, who said they didn't enjoy it. And I, I just, I think it's one of our best events that we do each year and I look forward to, uh, continuing that in future years.
Here, I'm going to leave some meat on the bone for Councilman Evans. All for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just going to present the same meat that's already been presented. So, yeah, I just want to say, uh, I, I've got a lot of comments from, from people that I know that came to the Fourteenth of July celebration. And, um, you know, great job to everybody involved, really appreciate it. I enjoyed it myself, I was there, grandkids were there and they enjoyed it, so, uh, look forward to that again. It'll be here for you knowing next year.
Absolutely true.
That's it.
So I'm not, not, now I'm the same bone, but I got to tell you, that, that was an amazing, uh, celebration. I know that it took every department to make that happen and, and I saw every department out there. And I have to tell you, uh, I don't know how many compliments I got about the fireworks from City Hall versus the fireworks at the mall. They, uh, they, everybody could see them perfectly, everyone was just ecstatic about the whole thing, so, uh, and as I talked to the chief of police earlier today, uh, there was no incidents to speak of, few children things, but other than that, you know, everything's perfect. And, and those types of things do not happen often in a city like ours that has so many people come to. It was, it really took a lot of effort and parking was crazy, but it was fun and we really enjoyed it all. And so I thank everyone for all your hard work and, and patience, that you, it was, it was hard on them. So we just went, came back from, uh, GMA, last, uh, couple of weeks ago. And I just want to mention a couple of things, one is I wanted to thank, uh, our city for putting me, putting me up for District Six as a District Six representative. Uh, I think it's going to be an honor for me, sir, uh, District Six, uh, is a group of, uh, folks in our district that have representatives, not from every city, it's been years since we've been able to have a representative on there, but, uh, got, I got elected on and, uh, this year, it's coming year I'm going to be the third vice president and we went through an installation of officers there at the GMA conference. And, uh, you'll mention Byrd and his certificate. So, uh, Councilman Byrd received his first certificate, uh, of education training from the University of Georgia, uh, through GMA, which they give us, they present us very, they have a very nice lunching and, and those that receive those milestones for different levels of education, uh, are called up front, in front of everybody at, you know, there's several hundred people in there, uh, to be recognized and, and our very own, uh, Robert Byrd was selected and had achieved enough to get to his first one and we're, we're really proud. He's, you know, everybody's working hard up here at town, we learn more about what our jobs are here in the city, but also to serve our citizens and, and so on, so that's all I got, man.
Thank you very much, that was great. Yeah, uh, you're right, uh, Councilman Byrd, you're up, we're really proud of you for doing that. Uh, this, you're only in your, basically your third year, so, uh, and you get the achievement so quickly. Outstanding, outstanding, we appreciate it, thank you. And I guess, uh, Councilman Evans here got elected or something too, or selected or something. He's at GMA, uh, and you want to tell us a little about it?
Well, I, I was appointed to the, uh, municipal training board. So those are the folks that, uh, work on all the training schedules and, and the curriculum, and, you know, all, all of that stuff for, uh, for the, for GMA. Uh, working along with the Carl Institute, Carl Vincent Institute, government from the University of Georgia. Um, so I was appointed by the, the President of the Board, uh, to participate in that. It's a four-year term, and, uh, so, uh, I'll be working hard to make sure that we all do the right thing.
Well, we appreciate you taking that out, and you know, it's, uh, something that really needs, and wonderful, see, our city now is involved in two different things, at higher levels up here, so the city's becoming noted throughout, uh, House and County and the state, you know, because of their efforts. Councilman Wright can't leave them out too, he just, he's one more horse he's got to take, and he will have.
Yeah, I got to do the, the, what's it called, Robert Knox?
Robert Knox.
I have, I have the hours for the next one, you got to do Robert Knox where you can get the, the.
That's right, so he's been trying, he's been working hard too, to make himself, uh, part of the city, and thank you very much for that. Fourth July was outstanding, all I can say is that we're beating the bone, thank you, everybody. Shannon, Mike, you guys did an absolutely wonderful job out there, all you people down there, uh, can't name them all, but they were out there. Fire park, I mean, fire park was, the yellow shirt was great, uh, them and my hat kept us standing out for everybody, so. But, give credit to Mike for having to give it to me last year, and I just kept it growing out this year, so they can see me out there and say, that, that was amazing out there. But outstanding, everybody really doing themselves, and, uh, got so many great comments, and things directed to me for it. Just really enjoyed it, hope we keep it up every year, it gets expensive, but every year it goes up in cost, but we enjoy it very much.
And I would say, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, the fire department was pretty busy, they were the lost child collection point. They required a few announcements, people looking for their children, or children looking for their parents. Go see the guys in the yellow shirt who did the tip, find the child.
Sometimes people bring up lost children too, sometimes a lost child seem to just walk up, and usually they found them, they was over there dancing with everybody, uh, dancing, just having a good time, forgot about their parents, or they were over there in the water, forgot about their parents. But it got them all together, got them all back together, so. Yep, most time it was lost parents we were looking for, child knew where they were. Okay, uh, the last, uh, week, I've had two meetings at the county level talking about the proposed spots coming up for twenty twenty-four. And we had our last one last night, so it's, we're going to announce it out there for everybody. You know, it looks, the, what they proposing was good, uh, for the county-wide projects and for our city. You know, our city, uh, gets, uh, the voters' approval, will get five million, four hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, seventy-nine cents. That's our percent, two point seven percent of the total. You know, and that's more money than we ever got before. This will help us do a lot of things, we have some great plans for it, you know, and if it's passed again.
I also have to remember that some of the county-wide items directly benefit from us and the city.
That's right, uh, talk about the House and County Cultural Center, that benefits us too, Cultural Center for all of House and County. House Lake Widing, more north of us, that's another great one, was about sixteen million for that. Thompson Mill Road Extension, it was an animal shelter for House and County, thirteen million for that one. That's going to be a, a great thing, we already participated in one they have here, but it's out and growing itself. And so we will have a new, uh, stated art one that's more friendly to the one right now, that's not necessarily friendly to people, the ones who get animals. But it's, it works, I mean, but it's not as good, and I'm very pleased with that, and see that was all there. Place called St. Patrick Drive, some of these things are just county things, and the ones that really impact us, Park and Recreation for Cities is five point six million, of which we have one point four million directly to help us with our parks. So that's going to help take some of the pressure off the taxes over the six-year period now. Nine-one-one upgrades, that includes a lot of things, it's probably going to be a change on the radios for us too. It's part of it, there's a lot of things to do with nine-one-one, it was some directly within, some with us too. And jail needs a new roof over there, so you keep putting people in there, they still got some room. Because the library system, we've not given almost a million dollars, and that's to help, uh, update the books and to the things that sit there to keep the libraries operational. But you got, I was thinking back in the history, uh, and this building here was built in two thousand and three, twenty years ago. It was the second spot that was put out, the first spots went for, uh, county buildings over there on Carl Vincent. The second spot, we got, we get this building out here, and that's the first thing we got. There's no way we could afford it without that type of capital money with the budgets we have in the city and the taxes we put on. Then, if everybody remembers, we originally were at, it's a dilapidated building, is that a good word for it? That's probably bragging about it, saying it's dilapidated, but we had a police department in there, fire park was in there, water sewer's in there, City Hall, the library was in there originally, court was in there, all these things went in. And now, because of the spots and the voters out there, look what we have now in the city. You know, we're really a recognizable city, we actually a real city now. We, we have, besides the City Hall course, we have a new police department next door, and a, a new fire department out there. The library, the library's still the top of the county, we got the best library in the county. New courthouse, new water sewer sanitation area out there. You know, and spots involved all that, a park, spots are part of that. You know, some of that money for that park came from the county's spots program, which is, you know, they set aside money for all the citizens in House and County, so we get money for things like that. You know, a lot of stuff we do in the streets out here, would they will afford that, you know, without no, you know, spots and what stages on that, that provides enough money where we can actually go out there and do many, many more streets. But we have to match state money, we don't want to get the money, so it's not something that's just given to us. But, you know, none of this would have been possible without support of our citizens, all our citizens, our citizens here in House and County, supported everybody. You know, and I really recognize that, and, uh, from my heart, I've been mayor now, you know, one, starting fifteen years pretty soon, I guess. But none of this would have been possible without their support. You know, and from my heart, I really sincerely thank you, everybody out there who's helped bring us where we are today. We are now proud and productive members of House and County, and we recognize this, uh, and we recognize the state level. I'm, I'm telling you all this, you know, if, if this spots is passed, we're going to do things like, uh, you know, public safety. We have a debt service, we need to get a new fire agent and a rescue truck. All, all enforcement buildings will get some renovation over there, enhancing space for evidence, because apparently all that stuff's really building up, getting one more every day, you know, that's thanks to our miscreants out there, people who cause trouble. Support patrol vehicles and, uh, police equipment, support, uh, some, uh, manned vehicles in the fire area. Transportation, once we have, you know, streets, sidewalks and infrastructure. Water and sewer, infrastructure, three hundred thousand dollars we'll put to that, that's going to help us if we, if anything passes, and we have to work for these streets out here, we replace the water and sewer lines, that would go along. Big replacement those areas there, so that in the future, we won't have that problem. Do updates, uh, recreation area, we'll have some more lighting and playground equipment. We're looking to start the amphitheater out there that we've been promising to everybody. You know, again, I, I say all this, but we can't do it out of the village, there's just no money in the, in the villages of there, as tight as it is. General capital obligations, like City Hall's been here now since, uh, twenty, two thousand and three. Air protection system's starting to go bad over the six next, six years, the next six years of the spots, we'll have to replace it. You know, this poor building has the same problem, we resurface some other, uh, street areas, we replace with computers. Computers are starting to get old, over six years, we need to replace all, basically have to replace all of them. And we got some buildings we need to, uh, do some upgrades on and rebuild, particularly the human planet. And we want to relocate the recycling site too. The one we have right now is kind, it's too small for what we have, for what it does. Basically, the only ones in House and County, so we collect, uh, from all over. I see far as everywhere coming in there, you know, I, I think it, we're talking about, a lot I think is Rob's Air Force Base, so when I see Dallas State. Without, I think they come from other states, but, uh, Rob's Air Force Base, we supporting them, you know, we, we do it. Again, all these things, uh, which is that, we estimated five million, four hundred and seven thousand dollars for, is something we need. So if this, if this spots passes, we can improve more and more for the city and keep pressure off the village there. This is what we've done ever since we've been here, to try to keep the pressure off of it. Can't stop all the pressure, but it's, at least try to control some of it. Anyhow, uh, that's everything I have, again, I thank everybody, uh, and Shannon, last Saturday, it was a great day out there, hot.
Food truck Friday?
Food truck Friday, a Friday, yeah, it was, yeah, food truck Friday. It was hot out, it was good food, you know, saw a lot of people. And I thank you for that too. Okay, and I won't have anything else, Steve, and everybody have a great evening, thank you so much for being here.